You can not listen to them at all. They have a right to be here and listen to the public process.
Yeah, very nice. No, I'm not either, but sometimes you have an council like that that makes it seem like, oh, they're not so attainable.
Because at the second reading, that's when the council adopts.
Nice, nice.
That's.
This would be the second reading, so.
The second reading's coming up.
I could let them say.
Like I said, and then, actually, I got to sit in Rupert's.
It's not gonna have an influence on us.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's very cool.
Obviously, I could.
Right, right.
Actually, I got to sit in pilot's. That's small.
Or back.
It's small?
Yeah, your function really is to determine whether or not proposed boards is consistent with your master.
Pilot, you're five six. Oh, yeah, you gotta crawl into this thing.
That's it.
Climb in.
But the cabin is, is.
Cabin is as big as you see.
Oh, okay. All right.
I was tired of watching the Yankees last night. They couldn't win.
There's no space to get out.
Got it.
You're a twin.
Yeah, yeah, those little plates make you nervous.
They couldn't win at ten o'clock. They had a week before eleven thirty.
Counsel.
I was watching when Judge.
Boy, I tell you what, that boy's got some.
Right, right, right.
Are you ready?
Just ask a question.
You know, sees all the celebrities getting.
You have to ask him, ask a question, can I ask you a question? That's how you run your Board of Education. You have to run interference against Coca-Cola. Yeah, but they don't like school board people.
I don't give a shit.
You run this here?
Five hundred pounds.
It's wild.
To the fur.
Yeah, which is the war.
Kind of cool.
Actually, my wife made me throw away all those old cans.
I'm sure she did, yes.
Save it. They went out and recycled.
That's to kill you.
Good evening. As soon as our planner sits down, we're gonna start. Let you get through.
It's gonna be a quick meeting.
I think so, yeah.
I'm all, I'm okay with it.
Can all rise? Mr. McEnon, if you'd lead us in the salute.
If I'd lead.
We just took the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Never.
Madam Secretary, has this meeting been published for the Open Public Meetings Act?
Yes, it has.
The sunshine laws? Thank you. Roll call of office, uh.
Fowler's not here. Mr. Hudekovic not here.
He's re. Yeah, those who accept.
Mr. Kelly is here.
They're all excused.
Well, yeah, Dennis is excused still, but he didn't call.
Ms. Lee?
On time.
Mr. Limbo?
Here.
Mr. McEnon?
I'm present.
Ms. O'Leary?
Here.
Mr. Velosen?
Here.
Ms. Mantilla?
Present.
Mr. Ty?
Here.
Mr. Rogoff?
Here.
Mr. Cornell?
Here.
Mr. Leon Cavella?
Here.
Was, uh, memorialization of resolutions, there are none? Acceptance?
Yes, sir, one.
Oh, pure, pure. We have, oh, we have one. We have the memorialization of the PURE application. Does anybody have any questions on that? If not, I need a motion to.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
In the, in the resolution, on page three, uh, number two refers to the amount of public events he can have a year. It says the applicant stipulated he will not conduct more than fifty-two. And then after number five, the first paragraph says the application to remove the restriction as to the number of public events to be permitted on the subject premises is hereby granted. So it almost seems like this sentence is overriding number two.
Well, well. I should have been clearer because.
Can we just put it on the record?
What that paragraph refers to was the previous restriction of October fifth, nineteen sixteen, which limited to four events. Were six events? Four, six events? I think it was four events. So, so I could change that so it's clearer by saying the application to remove the restriction as to four public events a year.
Exactly, so that it doesn't look like it's canceling out prior.
Yeah, so then that would, that would not be inconsistent.
Clear it up, right.
So with that change, I'll, I'll make that minor change and then send that to Pat in the morning, but that's what you'd be voting on. Okay, any other questions about the PURE application? We're gonna change the one thing to make it a little clearer. Do I have a motion on that?
Make a motion on that, Mr. Chairman.
Do I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
I can't vote I wasn't here, but I'm glad that we're approving it because I thought that was the right thing.
Mr. Limbo?
Yes.
Mr. McEnon?
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Velosen?
I don't think you were here either.
Ms. Mantilla?
No, she's done.
Mr. Ty?
Yes, and I'd like to thank the board for their due diligence in this matter. I know it's been dragging on for a couple of years and for the applicant for stepping up and doing the right thing and, and really cleaning that mess up down there.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment on that. I think the board acted in the best interests of everyone in the community, and our objections or our complaints were well documented here. And I also feel that the applicant has, uh, abided by our restrictions or whatever, and it appears as though that everything hopefully will run real well down there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if that's the case, I need to move on, and we need to accept the minutes from the last month meeting of September twentieth.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We accept those minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions under the minutes for September twentieth? If not, I'll take a, a, a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, communication agenda. We are going to go over everybody's received in the, in their packet and by email, the two resolutions or the two ordinances that we're gonna go over. First, we're gonna.
Yeah, I just wanna make one correction, Mr. Chairman. Uh, there's three sixty-four and three sixty-five. Three sixty-four is correct, but I.
Abolition.
I mistakenly included the development fee paragraph with respect to three sixty-five. I have since Xed it out and resent it to Pat. So that second paragraph is to be deleted. So the second paragraph starts as ordinance three sixty-five dash seventeen, amendments and supplements. That whole paragraph in three sixty-five, as it relates to, um, authorizing Saraville to impose, collect and expend development fees on three sixty-five is deleted.
That's three sixty-five?
Three sixty-five. It belongs in three sixty-four, doesn't belong in three sixty-five.
This paragraph right here.
That's, that's, no, it's a paragraph on top.
On top, okay.
That comes out of three sixty-five and remains in three sixty-four. It relates to three sixty-four. I just forgot to pick it up.
Okay, several, so three sixty-four is fine. We're gonna vote on that first, right?
Sure.
You've all received the ordinance three sixty-four. What's your, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the ordinances referred to us by the, uh, council be introduced this evening.
And sent back to the council with the favorable vote. All, uh, anybody have a second on that?
Second.
Any questions? If not, we'll have a roll call vote on three sixty-four seventeen.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Limbo?
Yes.
Mr. McEnon?
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Velosen?
Yes.
Ms. Mantilla?
Yes.
Mr. Ty?
Yes.
The ayes have it. All right, for our second consideration is three sixty-five, and it's going to, it's going to read exactly the same except the second paragraph. This ordinance is related to pending affordable housing litigation, Superior Court of New Jersey, implication, amendments of the master plan addressed by the borough, borough's affordable housing obligation and authorizes the borough of Saraville to impose, collect and expend development fees. That is out. Other than that, three sixty-five will remain the same. Do I have any questions on that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that ordinance three six five dash seventeen, which was also referred to the planning board by the Borough Council, be introduced this evening.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions under that? So three sixty-five dash seventeen will be in except for the second. All, we'll have a roll call vote on that.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Limbo?
Yes.
Mr. McEnon?
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Velosen?
Yes.
Ms. Mantilla?
Yes.
Mr. Ty?
Yes.
So the two ordinances are done.
Here's the corrected copy for you.
There's the corrected. Moving on with business, we have site plan subdivisions hearings. We have none. Old business, new business, administrative matters. Do we have any?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I, I spoke with John earlier today.
And, and which, which category?
The color, old business.
Old business.
Continuing business. My concern is that everything that's being said about affordable housing is inaccurate. About the number of units that are gonna have to be built, the market rate plus the affordable and what that ratio is. I've heard many people say at council meetings, and I even heard the council repeat, that the ratio is seven to one, that for every affordable housing unit that's built, seven market rates have to accompany that. Everybody recall that constantly, constantly being mentioned. I imagine if we asked the folks that are here tonight, they probably heard that information as well. We understand that that is absolutely not correct. John initially, when he went to that one council meeting, explained that, but still, we keep hearing seven to one. So it's not true, and, and the way the numbers work, and we talked about it this meeting several times in the past, that the real ratio, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, is about three point seven four to one. That's correct. Okay, so why then, if anybody could hear, can tell me why I keep hearing from people that know better, keep saying the ratio is seven to one, and that's what everybody's believing. So if it's seven to one, John, what does that put us in excess of five thousand additional housing units? Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. McEnon. If, if you're using the factor or the rate, and, and, and a number of people explained it, um, I guess to the public as if you took the seven eighty-five, which is our obligation from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-five, seven eight five affordable units. And you multiply that by the rate of seven, you come out with fifty-four thousand nine hundred and nine.
Fifty-four hundred.
Fifty-four hundred and ninety-five units of, of.
Mixed use.
Mixed of, of affordable and inclusionary housing.
Right.
Inclusionary, excuse me, and market rate housing. And if you took that number and, and made it somewhat more accurate in terms of the fifteen percent ratio for rental house, then you would really have six point six of, of a ratio. So you would mul, if you multiply then, the, the seven eighty-five by six point six, you come out with a requirement of five thousand one hundred eighty-one units.
That's still incorrect.
A little less.
But that's incorrect.
But it's incorrect.
Yes.
Because first of all, if you took our number of seven eighty-five, right, and you looked through the Excel sheet, which I gave you, I didn't bring any copies. I can make copies if you want me to, uh, in the copy room. But we had a number of properties, about ten properties. Let me, let me just check. We had Kaplan Site one and two, Cross Avenue. Luxury Point was four, Chase Partnerships, five, redevelopment, River Road Re-Development Site was six. Accessory Apartments was seven, and then Saraval Housing Authority units of one hundred and twelve was seven. You take all those numbers with the affordable housing, which Kaplan Site one was twenty-six units, then Kaplan Site two was forty-five units, and there were a number for each of the other ones. Luxury Point was one seventy-one. If you added all those up in that column, the first column on that Appendix A dash four draft page, you would come up with four hundred and thirty-four units of, of affordable housing. Now, first of all, under that category of that total, we subtract from nineteen eighty, in the eighties, that there was a, a carryover of credits we had from a prior round, which was in the nineteen eighties, and that was five hundred, one hundred and fifty-four units. So right away, we get a credit for that, so you add that to the four thirty-four. Then that gives you what we have as five eighty-five, which is the number of units we have to provide by two thousand twenty-five, which go from two thousand fifteen, before the gap years. Two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-five, it's five hundred and eighty-eight units. It's the number of the total of the affordable units presently, four thirty-four, plus the carryover credits from that prior round in the nineteen eighties, which was one fifty-four, and that gives us five eighty-eight. Now, to that, you also add again, we were taking another bonus, we were taking another rental bonus for the seven eighty, eighty-five times twenty-five percent. That would give us a rental bonus.
One ninety-seven.
One ninety-seven, and we add that to the five eighty-eight, and that brings us to the, the final number of seven eighty-five, which is the obligation from two thousand fifteen.
Right.
To two thousand.
When you add up all the market rate housing, any affordable housing, and you divide it by seven eighty-five, you get a ratio of three point seven four.
Correct.
And Mike, I, I can't answer that, but as a.
I can answer that because it's arithmetic. It works. It's been working for years.
Well, I, I understand the arithmetic, but I can't understand why Councilman Kapachik, first of all, on October second in the paper, says that it's a seven to one ratio when she's been told numerous times it's not.
And that's my concern. I'm not looking to, to name any individual. I'm just saying, from a team-stable perspective, and I don't know how many times I've said that, that we need to make sure that the right information is getting out. If, if, the people that are coming up and spreading that know well because we keep hearing about their experience and, and their knowledge in this topic. And we keep hearing seven to one and five thousand plus units when that is not the case. And the reason I'm bringing this up and asking because I have a meeting to go to on October eleventh with the Board of Ed on Blue Ribbon Pity Panel that we established last year to look at what we're gonna do to the schools with the overcrowding. Because right now, from this day school opened up September to now, we've had an increase of about eleven, one hundred and eleven students, just from September to October, from just people moving in. The houses, in my neighborhood particularly, was three houses where the original owners are selling, people are moving in with kids. These are four and five bedroom homes in the Oak Tree West community. And that's increasing our numbers. So we, we, we're moving in that direction. And that's not with any of these things being built. So when I go to this meeting on the eleventh, I wanna have accurate information to share because this panel consists of members of the public. Well, and they're asking this question, and I keep getting these emails, why is this being said? And then I'm saying something different.
I can't answer that. All I can say is that from the beginning, that, you know, they're still looking to judge, change, change this, the ordinances, things according to this article, and the judge has already ruled.
I understand.
I mean, we're not changing anything. The judge isn't gonna let us change anything. We, we're lucky we got away with our immunity. We've done everything, and we've told everybody in a timely fashion, if they don't get it, and they didn't, we can't make them.
Right, what our planner has just explained to.
Mike, just answer that. They, the first two drafts of this, they approved.
I understand.
You know?
Our planner has, what he just explained to us, I don't know how many times he said that in public. He went to a, a council meeting, right, Mr. Limbo, and he explained these numbers.
Been explained a number of times.
So then why do we keep hearing that it's seven to one ratio and it's five thousand plus units?
I would have to think because November seventh is coming around.
Okay, so what I would like us to do, now, now, is everybody on the board, you know, I know we have professionals here, and I, I trust wholeheartedly Jay and, and John, when we talk about these things, agree that this is what we're looking at. These are the numbers that our planner has determined. I looked over them. The math works. It makes sense. It's what I've been working with here for the last twelve years.
It's not only that our planner and we looked at it, and you, you did it. We had the master planner and the judge look at it.
Right.
And all decide that this is what they wanted.
Right, then why do we keep hearing information that is blatantly incorrect?
My question to you is that you should go to a council meeting and ask.
I like to do something even better. I like a letter that be come from this board, saying that this is what these numbers are, and we're, we're doing this because the public has questions, and we keep hearing this misinformation. And this is, this, this is the position of the planning board. Are we willing to do that? I make a motion that we do that and get that information out there officially. Now, I know I'm gonna get some legal opinion about it, but I'm just telling you, we need to be pragmatic. I'm, I'm, people are being misinformed.
I'm leaning back before I even answer you. I'm gonna ask the lawyer if we can legally do that.
Of course we can.
I thought it was seven to one too, to be honest. I was even explaining it to someone and saying that for every seven, there has to be one.
If I could go to a meeting and say, why can't we send them a letter? Why would there be any legal problem with that? Just to get on the record.
Yeah, I'm asking your, your opinion.
There's nothing that says you can't do it.
Okay, thank you.
But I don't recommend that you do.
Okay, thank you. I suggest, I'm making a motion that we send it. Because when is this gonna stop? How do we stop the misinformation? We just keep letting it happen?
Can we ask why you would recommend not to? Everywhere.
It's the facts. It's the truth.
Once again, I mean, my gut tells me that, you know, if you're worried about the consternation between the two public bodies, this just creates a little bit more by saying.
Let me stop you right there, counsel. I'm not worried about that. What I'm worried about is the public getting the accurate information.
Well, then.
That's why everybody's coming to the meetings and I, I, hopefully.
Maybe they really don't know the.
They don't know.
They have the accurate information.
Yeah, but they're not being, look, you know.
Somebody is telling them something different.
Propagandists will tell you, if you repeat it long enough, people believe it. Okay, and that's what's happening here, and nobody is defending us. Nobody's defending our planner, who, who's, who's taken a lot of heat.
I can't say that. I think the master planner and the judge defended our plan exactly the way we wrote it and the, exactly the way they passed it.
As of the last council meeting, we're still hearing seven to one ratio and seven, and five thousand plus units. So how could this be? Where is the disconnect?
I don't know. Somebody should be saying that the numbers are wrong.
Well, yes, let's put it in writing.
Without having the board.
Mr. Limbo, you're the, um.
Send a letter about it.
Yeah, we, we have, we have a representative that sits on the council, and would you feel comfortable on, on?
Yeah, by all means. It's been said, it, it's been documented a number of times, and, uh, as Mike said, it just, the rhetoric just continues at meetings, on social media. I attribute it to, to what, to what you said, Mr. Ty. It's, it's coming up, it's silly seasons, coming up on election time, and people wanna suit their own narrative.
People are unnecessarily getting riled up because they're purposely being misled. There's something wrong with that, isn't it? I mean, am I the only one who feels this way?
There most certainly is, but there's something wrong with going out and hiring a planner from the counselor, from the council, without even coming to this board and, and, and asking our planner how we arrived at what got accepted.
Well, sir, you're a mind reader, because that was my second point. What was the results of that? Do we know as the planning board? Are we gonna be entitled to what? What, what happened? Has it been done?
What's that? When it went to court?
No, we, you, the council hired a, another planner to look at our plan because they didn't trust our planner's version of it. That was done. What's the result? Is there a report?
There were, yeah, there was a report, and they had, they, they allocated ten thousand dollars and spent seventeen, and she looked at various things in the barrel and didn't come up with much more different things other than maybe that we could get some, um, extra credit for the Parlin Guest House and those houses. But, but that was iffy because they, they were weekly residents, not, not.
Well, if that's the case, then these numbers will be even better than what we just talked about. Because we'd have more credits. So.
But that, that didn't, that wasn't looked upon by the judge.
That wasn't, as far as I can, as far as I know, that wasn't reviewed by the judge or the court master.
So this planner that we hired, does she agree with these numbers?
She agreed, she, well, she agrees with some of the numbers. She's saying there's some other numbers that with the Parlin Guest House that may, may qualify as, uh, alternative, uh.
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing.
John, if that's the case, and if, and if she's right in that matter, that, that will be better for our numbers than the numbers that he keep touting inaccurately.
It would be. It would.
That makes it even better.
It doesn't completely wipe out the seven eighty-five.
No, but it makes it better.
But it makes it better.
Why don't we know that? If we spent seventeen thousand dollars to find out, hey, not only was your report good, this, we could even make it better. We don't even know that.
Well, because the mast, the master judge and the judge didn't, didn't look at it, and because the first two times we sent it to the mayor and council, we didn't get any feedback. It wasn't until April and Ju, May that we started getting feedback from these people, when it was three quarters of the way done.
I just think it's a disservice to our community, our residents, to, to rile them up with inaccurate information that is purposely being disseminated. When we have the numbers here, it, this is not high level math. This is arithmetic. It's real simple to figure out. You divide, you subtract, and you add, and you come up with a number. And every time we did it, it's the same number, but we keep hearing something different.
Well.
I don't get it.
It's fake news, Mike. Somebody's using it for their own, own.
And that's the problem. Everybody on this board needs to realize, and everybody wants to be on the board or run for office, that you gotta be thick-skinned because you gotta deal with this nonsense. That people will deliberately provide misinformation out there, to mislead people and get them riled up when they know better. And that, that's a shame. And that's why we have a stalemate in this country. Nothing can get done because you can't get good people to run for office and stay in these things because of this nonsense. And then we, and we can't send a letter, you know.
Why can't we send a letter?
We can send a letter. We can send a letter, but I mean, what's it gonna do? It's gonna go on deaf ears. We have, we have somebody that can go, go there and sit on the board and, and say, look.
I think, I think Mr. Limbo will read it at the next council meeting.
Absolutely.
Read it out loud.
Be my pleasure.
All right, what's your pleasure?
And he reads well. I've heard him speak.
All right, well, be my pleasure.
All right.
I'll second the motion on that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr..
Okay, we have a motion to send a letter to the mayor and council from the planner with the true numbers and how he arrived to it. Is that correct?
And we also want stated that, uh, we're a little tired of the innuendo and the untruthful statements that are being made by, uh, Mr. Robinson in particular. And it's, we're, it's affecting integrity of the board. We're not here to, uh, get beat up. We're here to do a job, and we do a job well. And I, I think everybody here, since I've been on the board, is, uh, is, cares about it, and, and we put a lot of thought into this. And it's just being, uh, out in the public that we're just kinda, you know, we're incompetent. We just go along with certain things and whatever. So I, I don't think it's right.
Okay, we have a motion to send a letter to the council, the mayor and council on, on our numbers and how we arrived by it, and our displeasure on, um, the misinformation that's been said in the paper from various people, but we just wanted to stretch, uh, set the ratio straight, okay?
Let me ask a question. Can we send it to the paper and, and ask them to correct it?
You could, but it's tough to get that done. Um, I just, Mr. Chairman.
I'll tell you what, we can do that. Susan, Susan Lawyer wrote it.
Lawyer, yeah.
Yeah, I know Susan. I can call her up and tell her.
They don't like to admit any errors.
Give my phone number. I'll talk to her.
I know her personally.
I reach more people that way.
Give my number. Seriously, I'll set the record straight.
I don't think it's a correction because it's not the newspaper's fault, right? It's, it's, they're, they're reporting what they heard.
Why don't they reply? Why don't they report both sides of the story?
Well, exactly, that we would have to maybe copy our letter and put it in there.
It's critically important because on Tuesday, we're gonna make decisions here that's gonna cost everybody in this town on what we're gonna do to, to prevent and, and deal with the overcrowding of schools. Now, the other factor that, which is point three, and then I'll get off the stage here, is that I, I, I found out that Prudential, who is financing the National Lead Site, has picked a new developer. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't know what that plan is gonna be.
They, the plan hasn't come out yet.
Right.
There will be a public meeting sometime in October.
My point, Pat, you, you're absolutely correct, is that we don't know, the current plan that was left on the table was two thousand units.
Well, listen, if Sarah, if Sarah's, if Sarah knows all of that.
No, they don't.
No, I don't.
They have not, North American Properties has not presented their final plan yet.
To Saraval? I mean, Sarah?
Yes, to anyone.
Anyone. Well, how do you, how do you know this? You just know this as a preliminary, being a council person?
No, I'm, I'm also sit on Sarah. We just met with North American Properties at our last meeting.
Okay, so they're, they told you that they have, they have control of the property, and they're gonna come up in October with a new plan?
Yes.
And that's it?
There will be a public meeting in October. It'll be held at Senior Center, someplace large enough.
My, my, my point, what I'm trying to make, and I'm not disagreeing with anything, and I, I believe you're a hundred percent correct, is that the plan that was left on the table at O'Neill was there was gonna be two thousand residential units. This development can come in and plan and say, I want three thousand. That can happen. There's no guarantees.
You think it's possible? We don't know what their final plan is gonna be yet.
So that's another issue, okay? Because the people that keep saying that this ratio was wrong are the same people that are okay with the two thousand units already going in there. See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Well, we can't fix that until they come before us. We can't fix, we can't. We can't fix a ghost. We have to wait that, we have to wait until that moves forward, you know?
It's on the record.
Yeah, it's on the record.
You're good with the first two?
I'm done.
Okay.
I just wanna read the letter. Pat, I'm gonna read it well, all right?
He's gonna do the letter, Mark.
When did you compose it?
So then, correct? He said he would.
Because I used the bigger words, the council.
If you order me to do the letter, I'll do the letter. Do I wanna do the letter? No, I don't wanna do the letter. If you tell me that's what you want me to do, I'm doing it.
Just have to be worded right so we don't look...
John, I...
Want me to work on it with Mark?
Yeah, I would just...
I would appreciate that.
It should be...
So we get all the numbers in there?
It should be one sentence, that these are the accurate numbers based on this and you add the attachment. That's it. Doesn't need to be a whole dissertation.
I'll take the numbers and transform it into something neutral and not antagonistic.
Yes.
Agreed, yeah, it shouldn't be anything that...
I don't want it to be antagonistic. Again, Team Sarahville, I wanna work with everybody. I live here, too.
Just a statement so that they can have the right...
It's a statement of what we've done, and these are the true numbers.
I would say the purpose of this letter is to inform the council that misinformation has been out there. We wanna set the record straight because this is what we do as a planning board. These are the numbers. If you'd like to discuss this with us, our meetings are held on Wednesday evenings, blah, blah, blah. I mean, it's simple. It's simple.
Okay. So between Mark, Pat, and John, we'll get a letter together. You'll send an email to me and to the rest of the board on what the letter is after it's done. All right? Anybody else have anything under new business, old business, administrative matters?
I was actually gonna ask about the point. People have been asking me.
Well, now you know as much as we know. October is gonna come, they have a new builder, and they're coming with a whole new plan, whether, what it is, where it is, what it is.
And Bass Pro is still on the table.
Bass Pro is almost ready to be put out. It's been put out the bid, and they're gonna start on that.
Okay, 'cause there's rumors out there, right, that everything is shut down, Bass Pro, they took their trailer. I said, nah.
Not true at all.
No, not true.
What happened to the old developer?
What happened to the old developer?
Fired.
Prudential fired him.
He was moving too slow.
Well, is it possible that the old developer just wanted to remediate the site and didn't sell it? Is that a possibility? It's happened before.
No, but, you know, I haven't talked to Brian O'Neill or his father, and I, you know, the last that I heard is that they wanted to develop the property, whether they had the financial backing, or they definitely didn't have the support of the financial backer, so, you know.
It kinda fell apart real quick.
Who's got it now, North American Properties?
Excuse me?
North American Properties, that's who has it now? Who's developing it?
And North American Properties is probably about 10 times bigger than...
Ah, and they submit their proposal and it goes from there?
Well, yeah, it's gonna be a whole new process then, right?
Absolutely.
It's gonna be a whole new proposal.
Wow.
It's starting over.
Depending on what they change and where they change and how they wanna change it, I mean, we have a concept plan for that.
There's a general development plan that we approved, maybe it was a year and a half ago, something in that order.
Right, right. That's exciting to see, a new plan.
And it gave all the information of when the...
The five sites, there was five sections that were gonna be developed.
All the components would be put together and the year.
Right, with that whole timeline, I saved that, okay.
That has to all be looked at, I guess, by them, and they'll revise it accordingly.
Is Bass Pro still part of the picture?
Yeah, Bass Pro's part of the picture, but I don't know if the mega mall is.
No.
Worst comes to worst, we've got an exit and entrance to the Garden State.
The mall is definitely out. That's the only thing they...
And a big Bass Pro shop.
Nobody's building malls anymore.
Oh. You know, I mean, that's, you know...
Details changed.
I talked to the county in the beginning of the month because the state is trying to lure in Amazon. And I'll tell you what, what a perfect site that would have been for Amazon. Right there in front of Garden everybody, and it had the inner structure to get people in and out of there. There's, you know, I mean, they're talking about places over in Biscataway, and that'd be a nightmare, I think. I mean, the one place in the county that has all the inner structure right there is the National Lead site.
Hey, Amazon don't have school-aged children.
Has Sarah approached anybody from Amazon? I know it's in the news every day about different communities are looking.
Sarah has, but I know the economic developments from Middlesex County is involved, but it's not, you know, and I asked, I says, are you looking at National Lead? You know, and they looked at me Greek, you know?
Never heard of it.
You know, but, you know, I can't believe that Amazon themselves haven't come, you know, if I was sitting on Amazon's board and I was thinking about moving to New Jersey and I saw that spot open, I'd say, that's where I wanna go. You know, I mean, just think about 5,000 peoples working in one place, you know? I mean, you're talking high-end jobs right down to people that are cleaning the offices, so...
Absolutely, and no schoolchildren going to school.
Well, kids don't bother me, but, all right. Any other questions? If not, I'll open the public session, make a motion.
Make a motion, open public.
Second?
Second.
Ladies, come on up, state your name and address. Good evening. Oh, you need a mic, yes.
Mike, Pat?
Yeah, but it wouldn't come up on the machine.
Hi, Monica Consiglio, Seven James Street, Melrose. I just wanted to chime in right away on the seven to one. I'm never, I've never been one to quote any type of ratios. In fact, that doesn't even interest me. It's the actual building where I live, the amount, not how many belong to affordable and how many are market rate. So I don't know why that's such an important, that will make a big difference to whom?
The entire town, we're looking at the entire town.
Well, just...
The number of units and school-aged children is the big issue, and the capacities of the schools.
How is that lessening? I don't...
Because it's, in the aggregate, it's a lesser number of units. A seven-to-one ratio gives you over 5,000 units totally, where the ratio that's really accurate, it comes out to less than 3,000. So it's a big difference, like 54%.
But isn't that a number we still need, X amount of affordable, like 24 in Melrose?
Yes, but it's the other, it's the other units that are market rate that would also go with that.
We wouldn't have to build as much.
Right, we wouldn't have to build as much.
Okay, so in Melrose, instead of seven-to-one, it would only be three to the...
Almost four, three and a half to...
Right, right. That's a difference, it's a big difference.
All right, now, my next question is, I know that you mentioned the judge, and he approved the planning, the ordinances, the way they were originally...
That's correct.
Okay. Any of those amendments weren't considered by the judge? In fact, the one I remember is the bulk variance that was...
No. The only thing that they did do is they gave Sarah what? When they paid the judge, what did the judge do with Sarah?
With Sarah?
Yeah.
They were let in as an intervenor.
They brought Sarah in as an intervenor.
So there are some things up in Melrose that we can tweak, you know, like if the town wants to buy that or if they can afford to buy that, you know, you still have to remember, there's, that piece of property has a price on it.
Okay.
You know, whether the town with their affordable open space can afford to buy that is another issue. They can get the county or somebody, but there's a little wiggle room there that could happen, but not much, okay? And he's gonna let them look into that. He's gonna give them, what, 60 days to look into that?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, Mr. Chairman, he said 60.
I saw that online. It said 60 days immunity, which I really didn't understand.
Well, that's it.
Well, that's a different issue. The immunity is a different issue than what the chairman just spoke about.
Okay, what is...
Immunity is immunity from builder suits. And if we had lost our ability to perform and fulfill our obligation, we might be open to builder's remedies and suits.
Oh, okay.
They would challenge the zoning ordinance and challenge everything that we've done, and the judge continued our immunity so that we wouldn't have to face that predicament.
Okay, now, going back to the bulk variance, because I'm a layperson, that I just understood at the planning board that the bulk variance, you weren't approved, and that night, that the council had recommended to use the original code of Sarahville, correct?
Right, because if we had approved it, the judge's outcome might have been different. This is what was handed to us was what we were asked to do. The council and their, not their wisdom, and their decision, they wanted to try to change it at the 11th hour, and we felt as a board that we had been consistent with that all along, that we weren't gonna change it, because we didn't wanna jeopardize getting the town sued. Okay, that's why we did that. We felt that that's the way it was gonna come down, and it did. You know, it could have been, if we went with that, it could have really irked the judge and said, look, this isn't what I asked you people to do. And, you know, and the master planner, they all agreed. We all sat down with these people and came up with this plan in April, and then people in May and June decided that they wanted to start tweaking it. Well, guess what? It was too late. You know, I mean, and some of the people on the council said that they hadn't read it, that they hadn't been given the information. Some of the people on the council, Mr. Grillo is a planner. He sat on this board, he explained it to all of them, nobody paid any attention, and that's the same problem that Mr. Macodon has with this ratio. Nobody's paying any attention, they're just putting out false information. This board has been consistent in what we've done for the last year and a half, and we've tried to do the best that we can for the town, in every part of town, not only Melrose, but the people on Ernston Road, the people in Sarahville proper. You know, we didn't jury-mander this, we looked at the whole town. We took our time to do this, and unfortunately, there was nobody here during the whole process when we did this, you know?
Well, I think I mentioned that at the council meeting, that the public was only made aware of it in May. So how could we have been there last year when there was nothing letting us know that you were gonna build right up the street from me? Or else I would have been here every meeting.
Unfortunately, nobody reads, well, we put our notices in the paper, and nobody comes to the planning board meetings, but I mean, we've been noticing, and we've been sending, more people go to the council meetings, right? But people didn't start picking up on it, even at the council meetings, because the council was just passing it along. They're saying, okay, we agree, and they sent it back to us. The second time when we sent it, they did the same thing. The third time for the final approval, somebody finally read it and said, you know, well, maybe they could do this, maybe they could do that, maybe they can do that. Well, guess what? That's not what we chose to do. We chose to do A, B, C, and D, and by the time they started trying to change it, the judge looked at it and said, look it, you went from over 1,400 to 700 number, you did pretty good, you know? Keep messing with it, you're gonna go back to the fourth. And that was always the boogeyman hanging out in the closet, that we were gonna go back up to the higher number. You know, I mean, we as professionals, I mean, we as laypeople with our professionals, I think we did very good for the town, you know? Can there always be a better tweak? Yeah, but I'll tell you what, the way they went about it was horrible.
The notices that went out to residents of within 200 feet, how come that didn't happen last year? Because that's what made us all aware in Melrose. That's what I'm referring to, that we didn't, no notices that building was gonna come within 200.
Wasn't required. We weren't required this, because you're only required to send out the notices for the applications when there is a...
You're changing the ordinance.
Right.
Okay, which is the big...
You know, I mean, it's not like we didn't give you the due diligence that we didn't have, that we had to, we did, you know?
But that's why we weren't here last year, because those notices just went out in May, and then, you know, residents of Melrose took it upon themselves to alert everybody.
I'll tell you, I go to church in South Amboy. Number of people grabbed me after mass, and there was a number of people that knew about it. And I'll tell you what, I go to Boy Scout meetings, there's a number of people up on Oak Tree, on Ernston Road, near the water tower, where they have an interest in building. Those people have the same interest as the people of Morgan. I mean, the day that that was on the docket, there was 80 of them here, you know? So I mean, whenever that part of the town happens, you know, it's the same thing when the Mako property is gonna be talked about, all the townhouses across the street on Main Street are gonna be out, you know? But that's just the nature of the beast, you know? There's only so much that we can do within the state statute that allows us to do what we're doing, you know? And quite frankly, I think we operate as a pretty open and...
Okay, as, going now to the luxury point, at the planning meeting, that's gonna be in the cafeteria, is that plan going to be unveiled to the public?
Yeah, well, the last time what they did, when, what do you call, came down? He went down to the senior center, and they had all sorts of pictures and beautiful things of what they were gonna do, this, that, and the other thing. Now, we have concrete drawings of what has been proposed. We're gonna have to see what they propose compared to what we have, you know?
That was already proposed.
Proposed. Now, you know, I mean, the inner structure may stay the same, because where the mall may be, there may be an entertainment area, there may be an office building, there may be hotels, I don't know. I'm just thinking off of the top of my head.
When you say infrastructure, you mean the roads that go in and out and around?
Yes, the inner structure, the water, the sewer, the plumbing, all of that is laid out, all of the roadway.
Are they changing it from...
We have no idea.
Okay.
You know, the only thing I'm gonna tell you that they're not gonna change is the You know, the only thing I'm gonna tell you that they're not gonna change is the Parkway exit, because that's being, that's almost done.
It's done, it's open, yeah.
Well, I just came through that way from the Perth Amboy Bridge and it just dawned on me, okay, we're not only dealing with 162 units in Melrose, but now we have 2,000 right to my right. We have a problem-
And don't hold that, don't hold that number, that, that number may be disappearing, and if it does, it may disappear higher, you know, but I-
But it's, still, if it's there and Luxury Point is there, the roads around there, it's just like almost impossible now when you're coming at that light and I made a left and now you have to get over because the hotel has its own lane, and now the other side that comes the other way, they think they have their own lane. That's all I'm saying. Is anybody concerned about that? And that all of the people that might be living in Melrose, 162, if that's gonna be the number, you say 300 cards, two per family, are gonna cut up Oak Street, Oak Road, whatever, Oak Avenue, to get to Cross, to get into their development. It's gonna be met, so that's why I'm concerned, not that it's affordable, not that it's-
You know, we can't discuss those now, we, we have to wait until the applications come before it, and, and traffic is always a tough thing to do because you can't deny an application on traffic. All we can do is make sure that the inner structure is put in right, that, that it should handle what they're saying, you know, I mean, all of that, right now, that's just, you know, that, that's a big wish that I've been waiting for, for 25 years, well, it just got pushed away again, you know? I mean, every time we go to close that in, you know, when I thought we had five sections and roads coming in there, this looked good, you know, we're talking about, um, restaurants that were gonna come there and everything, it's, we'll have to wait to see these new people, what they're gonna do down there.
Putting in lights, like say on Main Street where the police station is and you can go straight, not the police station, the veterinary, uh, you can make a left to go to ShopRite if I'm going to ShopRite. There's no light there. Will, like, light be put there with all these extra flow of people?
Same thing.
Like, when does that come up?
That, that may be, uh, that may be a condition of, of, of the settlement, you know, that's usually what we do.
Because that's dangerous.
You know, the new light that they put on, and that was part of, uh, you know, it's just like-
Your agreement.
When they build the Mako property, that they're gonna have to go into White Oaks, you know, that there's paper streets that would be opened up, like the one that we put off of, uh, Deerville Road when, when things, those things are on a master plan, they will be implemented, but, um, all of that stuff, that's when we can say, "Look, it, this isn't gonna work," you know? I mean, when Mako puts in whatever he's gonna put in, he's gotta put a light in on, on Main Street too, all right? Maybe two, you know?
And when you come off the Parkway, I drove that way many years working, and I would make a left to go to, on Main Street, to go to the light where the Dunkin' Donuts is, that, that's like treacherous. So then, because you're trying to make a left and people are coming this way like crazy, so a light should be there if we get all of this extra residents that are driving.
Well, we'll see.
Okay, thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good points.
Good evening. Your name and your address, please?
My name is Regina Ladato. I live at 20 Fraser Avenue in Melrose.
Hi, good evening.
All right, good evening. I'd like to ask Mr. Cornell, on our property that we're asking about on Cross Avenue, did you get those papers to tell us what's wrong with the property, that it's contaminated?
Mr. Chairman-
You were supposed to get it at one of the meetings, and I haven't heard that anybody got it.
I, I did. I dropped it off to Mrs. Benedetto yesterday. It's a package that's probably this thick of, of report that talks about the contamination, and I personally delivered it and gave it to her yesterday.
All right, well, she couldn't make it for tonight, so-
She hasn't.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Cornell.
Now, again, just because that's a report, right, and, and whatever that says, whoever owns that property has an opportunity to come before this board and tell you what he's going to do to mitigate all of that, to make it better, before they can do anything, okay? There's all sorts of hurdles that they're gonna have to jump and a lot of hula hoops that they're gonna have to wiggle around in to make that a buildable piece of property.
I was at your meeting and you told us that. You told us that they can do all different kinds of things.
They can.
That's why we were trying to get open house, um, open area and space so that we didn't have to build on that piece of property. But National Lead now just went to court, and I don't know if they got their rant that they were trying to get to be an intertwined. Do you, does anybody know?
Intervener.
Intervener?
They did get it.
They are, yeah.
And the same thing, we were supposed to have a meeting Monday. The mayor said he could get all you people together.
No.
Wait a minute, not, not a quorum, but he could have two members of each group. That's open space, the planners and his group, and he was gonna discuss something, and that got canceled as of Monday.
Yeah, that got canceled because the, um, litigation got solved and there's still legal things, and the attorneys told us that if we met, that we could be in conflict of the municipal land action, so that's the reason that, that was done, because we, we don't wanna get sued.
Yeah, it was brought up at the last meeting. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? If not, I think we should close. All in favor?
All right.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Limbo, when is the meeting that the, the presentation on National Lead is gonna be given to the public, you said?
National Lead, you mean North American Properties?
Yes.
Sometime in October.
But they haven't established a date yet?
Haven't set a date yet, no.
Or a place.
So when they, when they, when they present this, this will be Sarah hearing it for the first time as well?
Well, this will be, it'll be done at a public meeting.
At Sarah's public meeting?
I don't know if it'll be a Sarah public meeting, it'll just be a public gathering and they'll explain their plan.
All right, so like I'm saying, that Sarah will hear it at that time too, so you will know ahead of time with the plan.
Or has Sarah heard it already?
No, Sarah has not heard it. They haven't, they haven't come up with their complete plan yet.
Okay.
Whether it's gonna go to Sarah first and then the public, I'm not sure at this point.
Okay.
Can you just repeat the number, the, the correct ratio again?
Yeah, if we come back.
Correct ratio, what the true numbers are?
The, uh-
3.74.
3.74.
Three point-
All right, the rate number, you know, that you multiply by the 785 is, is 3.74.
The engineer just told me that there's certain things, Jay, why don't you go ahead and just say that again? What happens, this is what's gonna happen with the American Properties, and, and there's seven, several different ways this can go.
Mr. Chairman, what I indicated was that there is a specific redevelopment agreement concerning what can happen on a National Lead property. If that, if they're proposing changes to the number of units or the type of improvements that are gonna be constructed, that redevelopment agreement is gonna have to be amended to allow them to do what they are proposing to do. Also, as was mentioned earlier, you have a general development plan that is specific as to what can be built on that property. If they're now proposing something different, they'd have to return to this board and get an amended approval to allow that change to take place. So if they're looking to change their plan, lots of other things have to happen before they can actually start doing that.
So this meeting in October is just gonna be a wish. This is gonna be their wish, and then they're gonna have to go through Sarah and the planning board. But until we know what their wishes are, we don't know what they're gonna change and what they're gonna keep, and that'll affect what moving parts have to get fixed by Sarah or by the planning board.
And, Mr. Chairman, also the council, because the council approved the redevelopment plan, so they're involved with the process as well.
So it would go to, the, the process would be Sarah would send it here, we would, we would review it, send it to the, to the council, and then they would send it back to us.
Sarah typically makes a recommendation to the council, council refers it to you, you review it, make a recommendation back to the council, council votes on it.
All right, so there's gonna be three different things. Come on up.
I just wanna say something very quick, if it's possible.
That's up to you. I can, I can speak quick. How about you?
The letter that's going to be read at the council meeting, could it be placed online where it's under your business, the way I write about the agenda tonight?
Sure, we could do that. Can you do that, Pat? After we do that, we can put that online.
Great, because then whoever does keep up can read it themselves.
Well, listen, when you go to the council, say, "No, I was at the planning board and this is what they said." Stand up for us, we need some help.
Okay, all right.
We'll be getting beat up for no reason. If there's nothing else, I'll take a, a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor? Thank you for all coming out, thank you for coming.
John?
Thank you.
Do you have a meeting on the 18th?
Uh-
Not canceling?
Having a meeting on the 18th?
We may have a meeting on the 18th. Um, if not, you'll get an email, and if not, we're not gonna have one until December.
No, November?
No, November, the second, no, the second weekend, the second, well, we'll-
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Manikavala has a conflict at your November meeting.
November 1st.
By the end of the week if the conflict holds.
So you only have one schedule.
Yeah, we only, the leave of municipalities and the, um, Thanksgiving, take, take, take president in the end of October. We will, we will contact everybody if we're going to have a meeting on the 18th or the 1st, okay? We'll leave it at that.
Excuse me, Jay? Thanks for sending me that email. Can I just ask you a couple of questions so I can explain it to people absolutely, because I'm getting phone calls. It is, so, does this mean that they have a better shot of getting the change they're looking for?
I don't really care. Somebody's happy, somebody's happy. Where you been? Huh? Oh, I've been looking to play with you. I'm going to deal tomorrow. I'm getting taken too. I'm loving it. Who do I sign?
I need to go set the camera on.
I hear seven to one everywhere, I don't know where, but I see it.
Somebody actually said the word five, huh?
Well, if it's seven to one and you need 785, then obviously, 785 times seven-
All right, that helps a lot, thanks.
Absolutely. Can you need seven to one?
Hey, private, here's what you can let you know. Night with Ty.
I'm going.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.